Hi, how are you?
That's, that's, that's the.
And it's like, it's very.
They can get rid of it. That statement.
They do it everywhere. I mean, it's different degrees, I'm sure.
Right.
But their options was always the same thing. They just, they just. They don't care. And they'll deal with the aspects of the game. It's there there.
Okay. Yeah.
So. Welcome. Do you have any questions?
I just, I just, I'm zero. I need to hear.
To like. You want to, that we just know that with that comes the responsibility to ram or score. Yeah. Like, like they're.
Well, it's getting, if there's one thing about aspiration, um, if you want, if you're beginning. The prior.
Excuse me babe.
To speak and it turns red? This is some.
Right at the corner. Yes, now they are. Did you, can you just send out an email asking about Amazon? It's like, he found that said, it was probably, I was like, do you use Amazon? I was like, is this? Cause I figured, I was like, I'm like, that was not you. And I thought, I was like, well, I'm sure. I didn't answer. I think they're not going to check it out.
It's yours.
It's amazing.
There it goes.
Yeah.
It's just like the cable company.
Yeah.
They'll do everything to get somebody to pass them on to the.
That's it. I thought it was. I'm like, yeah. I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna do it.
You doing good?
I'll come in like. No, cancel it. I'm gonna get it in there. How long has it been? Well, I don't know if you can get it. So. I saw they were, I got, there was an orange flag, like behind me. Okay, so you know where your transformer was behind you when they walk in the summer? They came to my house, I called, and said that, I was like, I complained about my. Just do you have one more player? Um, that connected to my, to my house? And they had to do, they did a double podcast on that, and that's like, literally, I had to go every so often. So I called them, they, you know, the day, I started that one, um, I see people there anymore. The guy got, got it right, and then he's like, oh, here's the, or you're right now, we're. And he gave, he was like, gather his cards, and then he, they stood. He was like, I'm not having any, I'm not having any. He's like, I'm not having any. He's like, I'm not having any. We have.
Hey Ed, hey.
Can we wait a few minutes?
No, I'm actually in the meeting, I'll stop by there when I leave here. Okay, 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 all right, bye.
This morning, this will get started, so, welcome to the March twentieth.
And if you could turn your microphone on please, that would be the right button and that's where it would show red. All right, thank you. Hey Sam, gotta get back into it. Uh, welcome to the March twentieth ZBA meeting and, um, we, uh, will begin, uh, with a roll call.
May?
Present.
McClellan? Waino?
Here.
The Bakwa?
Here.
Uh, Kirkendorf?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
And Anderson?
Here.
Anderson is here.
I have not.
I have not heard from, uh, Commissioner McClellan, so, um, maybe.
I think he said last time he wasn't here.
Okay, thank you so much.
He's out of town.
All right, well, his absence can be excused, so, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, official communications, do we have any? Yeah, I do have one set of, or one thing of official communications, um, and this might be for anyone coming for the public hearing, uh, tonight on item six A. Um, there's a variance, uh, public hearing scheduled this evening, um, the, uh, public hearing notice went out, uh, the city did receive some questions about it from, from the general public. Unfortunately, the applicant, um, was, became ill over the weekend, he is better, but unfortunately was not able to make it to Pontiac tonight for the meeting. He is requesting that this be tabled, uh, to next month's meeting, and so we can take care of that at six A, but I just wanted to let, um, the public and, and the ZBA know, uh, that this item has been requested to be tabled, so. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if nothing else, do the adoption of the minutes, uh, do we have any questions or concerns about the minutes? And if not, do we have a motion?
Submove to approve with any necessary corrections?
Support.
We have a motion and support, uh, roll call please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Kirkendorf?
Yes.
The Bakwa?
Abstain.
Waino?
Yes.
And May?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. For the record, you're not required to abstain if you weren't in the meeting, but you still have the opportunity to abstain if you want.
Okay, good to know, thank you. Um, next item is old business, do we have any old business? So we have one item of new business, um, I'm gonna get into the presentation as we get started for this, uh, which is a public hearing tonight, so. Um, tonight, uh, we have ZBA case twenty-three zero eight, the applicant is Felicia Robinson, the address is at ninety-nine Norton Street, um, the request is for a childcare facility up to twelve kids in an R-one zoning district. And, um, we gave a, a presentation last month, uh, planning commission tabled it just because the applicant was unable to make it, so. Um, just some background information, the home is part of the Sanderson and Johnston addition neighborhood, um, the applicant requests to allow, again, a twelve child daycare to the site. Childcare is not permitted in the R-one zoning district, um, and for some reference, and I have a map on the next slide, but homes on the southwest side of Norton are zoned R-one, um, which does not permit this, but homes on the northeast side, or nor, northeast and northwest side of Norton are zoned R-two, and, um, there is a special exception process for that, so. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, they were, the applicant was unable to attend the February twenty-seventh public hearing, and so, um, and from the tabling, planning commission did request additional information from the applicant about the site, uh, particularly about the fence. Uh, the applicant has provided a sketch plan, which I'll be showing momentarily, showing the property, uh, and the proposed fence, and while a site plan is not a part of a ZBA approval, it can be considered as it relates to the variance decision. So, um, these are just some photos from Norton Street, just showing the existing house, um, this, the home is approximately, I think seventeen years old, it was built in the early two thousands, and so it's a little newer than the other properties on the street, and it is a, a long, narrow faci- facility. Now, the, the adjacent properties, as you can tell on the, on the left and right, are vacant properties that are owned by, uh, different ownership, so, um, really, you're looking at a typical thin lot that you see on most properties on Norton here, uh, as we go through this. So the upper left is just showing where this is located on the property, if you can see, uh, the laser pointer, this is where it's located in, in, uh, proximity to downtown Pontiac in the loop. Um, the, the bottom left here is just showing this property along Norton, again, the railroad tracks is up here, and so you have, um, one section of property with R-two, um, zoning over here, and then you have this, uh, this subject property in the yellow. And then this is the zoning district map, and you see these R-one properties on that southwest side of Norton, and then you have these R-two properties on the northeast side of Norton, and then there are some R-three properties, uh, to the south of the subject property. So you do have a lot of mixed, uh, residential zoning when it comes to this area, it's not uniform, uh, when it comes to the entire neighborhood, and part of it is the proximity to downtown and the uses, the historic uses that are there. So the next slide I have here identifies, um, uh, say, uh, just a, a sketch plan that we received from the applicant, um, last week, and it, this is showing the property, right here, Norton Street is at the bottom, um, this is the principal house, if you can see this at the bottom here, and then this black highlight just identifies the fence, which is intended to be, um, built along the property line, uh, on the, uh, on three sides there. And it is a six-foot fencing wood material, you know, which is typical for a residential, uh, neighborhood, and, and should help the applicant, uh, for the requirements of the state of Michigan for a childcare. Um, they can speak to that a little bit more, the no variances would be needed for, uh, this fencing, so, um, that hopefully can help, um, help the ZBA. So, when looking at a use variance, which is, which is what is being requested tonight, um, there are seven standards of approval, um, that you need to be familiar with. Is the property, the property in question cannot be reasonably used, or cannot yield a reasonable return on a prudent investment if the property would be used only for a purpose allowed in the zoning district. Number two, the plight is due to unique circumstances peculiar to a property and not to general neighborhood conditions. Number three, the use to be authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of the area and locality. Number four, the problem is not self-created. Number five, the spirit of this ordinance will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. Number six, there's compliance with the standards of six point four oh one B, which protects, in generalities, protects the surrounding, uh, vicinity from any detrimental effects on property values, public health and welfare, and there's also compliance of the standards of discretionary decisions of six point three oh three, so. Um, the summary points is this use would be permitted across the street and behind the rear of the property, while the lot is narrow, the lot is long enough to accommodate the use and accessory uses in the rear yard, and the city's planning consultant concluded that a childcare facility with twelve kids will not be, will not marginally increase traffic, or significantly impact, uh, significant, create a significant impact to the neighborhood. Um, I do want to clarify something that was mentioned at last month's meeting, the applicant tonight is the property owner, and so, you know, there were some questions, uh, last month, and I, I think I had a misunderstanding about the applicant's role with the property, but they are the property owner and can address any questions you may have, and then, um, really, uh, there's some analysis in your staff report about the recommendation, uh, but as a matter of practice, staff only provides, uh, that analysis and not a recommendation on variances. If the, uh, zoning board of appeals, um, feels that there, that the applicant has met, um, the standards of approval, that they, uh, can't, you can approve, uh, a motion to, uh, approve the use variance, but if they don't feel, if you don't feel that they meet those standards, um, the ZBA may consider denial of the variance. I do want to highlight something, uh, that's on the screen right now, it is in your staff report, uh, the planning consultant did identify five conditions, if the ZBA was looking to approve this variance, um, just having to do with, number one, a landscape plan, uh, number two, a provision of a develop, development schedule, you know, is this something that could be completed within, um, six months, which is the timeframe for the U R required to begin construction, uh, for a variance approval. Uh, number three, to limit the operation no earlier than seven AM and no later than six PM, as is proposed in the application. Uh, number four, the use shall not encroach on any adjacent lots, including vacant lots, and number five, the applicant receives and maintains licensure from the state of Michigan, uh, for the duration of this use. So, um, with that, that is my staff report this evening, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have, and the applicant is in the audience. Does anyone have questions of administration? Would the applicant like to say anything? If you want to speak, yeah, you can go to the microphone. And just state your name and address when you're up there, please.
I'm Felicia Robinson, from ninety-nine Norton Street, Pontiac, um, to address some of these things, um, my schedule for the daycare, I plan on having it between normal business hours, which is between eight and five PM. And as far as building the fence, I plan on building the fence as soon as I get approved for the zoning, and I can submit all of my paperwork to get my license for the daycare, so that timeline should be, um, hopefully in three to four months, and I also plan on, um, applying for more funding that is available right now in Michigan for, um, childcare businesses, which will help me finish the fence and pay for anything else that will be required to get approved. I believe that's all.
I, I, uh, can you turn the mic back on for a second? I just have a question, just in general, about, uh, daycare in this process, so, so this is different than just a state certified home daycare where, um, you're gonna have the ability to have more children there than, because it's a group versus just a, a standard home daycare?
Um, yes, a group, um, home, you can have up to twelve, whereas in a standard, you can have six.
Okay.
Um, when I was calculating everything, I found, um, six wouldn't be enough numbers for me, for what I'm looking for with this investment, because I already have two children, and, um, that counts towards the number, so there will only be ten more families actually, um, utilizing parking and things like that, because I already have two children at home, so.
Yeah, um, okay. Does anybody else have questions for the applicant? Okay, I guess at this point, uh, we can open the public hearing, if there's any questions from the public. So, the public hearing was notif- noticed to the Oakland Press, and it was also noticed by mailings, um, and while it doesn't appear some, anyone is here, I do want to share, we did receive one letter, and I just, and it is from Tammy El, Elbira, if, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, but I'm gonna pass that out to each of the ZBA right now.
You had, uh, two letters last month.
Yeah.
But you haven't noticed, there's nothing in the write-ups or anything about them. Are you gonna read them in, or should, to be recorded?
Would you like me to read it in, or are we? That, so, all we need to do is acknowledge that we've received the letters, um, and obviously, it's, you know, ZBA can, um, and it is a, a little bit of a lengthy letter, but, um, you're not required to read it in, so. And because this is a public hearing, a different public hearing than last month, that's why those letters were not included. So with no other comment, we can close the public hearing then? Okay, public hearing's closed. Is there any questions or comments from the, uh, from the board? About the application in general?
Um, my only, um, comment would be, last month, we did get a couple of letters from some residents, um, and then, um, top of this one today, I was thinking that she had already had a license, I didn't know just, like, she's just like in the process of getting the license and everything like that, um, so for me, um, I'll just leave it at that, but, okay, that's fine.
You know, and I just looked at this letter, and concern is, oh, it's like, it's what I can, what I can do with my, walk with my dog and all this kind of stuff, and then had to do with anything else, with somebody trying to start a business or something like that, you know, because you had a daycare center in West Haven, that, uh, I don't know, I don't know, Orange, not Orange, but, uh.
The one by Walton?
No, it's more like going down, it's off.
Can you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
It's close to Norton, it was a church.
At Williams?
Yeah, now when you come off of, uh, when you come off of, uh, F fifty-nine, you take a right, like you're going out to, at the back of Pontiac Central, there was a daycare center there and a, and a church, it had a daycare there.
Oh, correct.
Had a, had a big daycare there.
Correct, that the church, the church, they caught fire.
And my daughter went there, and that was there for years, so that was in pro- close proximity to, uh, what she talked about now, because, and my daughter, she, it was safe over there for her all the time, she was going, and there were more than twelve kids over there, that's for sure.
So, and Mr., uh, Commissioner Anderson, I believe what you're referring to, there is still a daycare on Norton, it's not on this block, but it is the next block up, and it's between Sanderson and Johnson.
Okay.
And I believe, I, I can't confirm, but I think there's a church there, um, but if, um, if I'm wrong, it's because I'm new, so.
No, there is, there's, there's the church on State Street.
Yeah.
That he's referring to, as they had a part of the church, the summer, you know, summer camp and.
Yeah.
Daycare part of the church.
But would that, that would probably be in compliance with, with zoning restrictions? I believe that the, uh, the one that's a block up is also R-one, um, but I think that there's also some legal grandfather, you know, and, because I, I have a feeling that it's been there for a while, I can't confirm that this evening, but, um, you know, and again, this is right next to Johnson, which is across the street from Stone Lake, um, it is a different area, but I believe it has the same zoning district. I guess my concern on this is that, you know, when you provide, um, the authorization on this, then there's nothing to stop other folks from doing it in R-one, and once we set a precedence like this, and there already is a provision that the state allows for, uh, certified home daycares, just limiting the, the number of, of, uh, children that can be there. Um, yeah, I do have a concern with, um, you know, putting that size of a operation in a, uh, an area that's residential, that people don't expect there to be that much activity happening, um, so those are my concerns. And Chair, if I could just point out, the, sometimes the optics to the community are very clear, you know, so if you see a use variance going for this, you may feel that that is precedent setting, but it is not precedent setting, at least from the ZBA's perspective, because you're individually evaluating tonight's application, and you would do it any future application to make sure it fit in with the environment, just because it's in R-one doesn't mean that the next one that comes forward would be allowed, otherwise, we would, you know, staff would have to evaluate our zoning code with planning commission and city council. Really, you're kind of evaluating those seven standards to see, does this use fit here, um, you know, and, you're right, the optics are there, you know, to get more. It's about setting a precedence that. Yep. You know, that, that can be called upon. Yeah. When the next applicant comes and says, well, I, you can prove no differences between that applicant and my application, so therefore you have to approve, would be, I would guess, a smart person's presentation. Well, the unique circumstances about this, even though it's in an R-one, is it's surrounded by R-two and R-three, you know, and, you know, it does that way to, to the ZBA, I mean, I think that's up for you as a board to decide, looking at the surrounding area, but it, the base zoning is R-one, so, I mean, that's why this is not a special exception permit, it is a use variance, because it is not, uh, specifically allowed, um, in, in that zoning district. Well, thank you for the conversation and, uh, clarification, so, folks can make an informed decision, uh, I guess we're at a point where, uh, we're looking for, uh, motion. I do not have motions in the pack, and I'm sorry, so, if you need any help with that, please let me know.
Well, I was going to make the motion to deny, because I, I didn't get, I thought we were going to have some more conversations on it, but.
We can?
I, I just thought it was just, the same comments that you had, is it was too large of a request for the size of house, uh, no parking, basically, on the lot, everything would have to be done off the street, and, um, and since it's in R-one, most of the houses in the R-two, R-three across the street, that are left, because a lot of them have been demolished, that were rental units, but the ones that are left are basically mostly, not saying all, but mostly single-family homes left in, in the area, all the rental, of the lo- larger homes that were cut up into, you know, five, six units, those are gone, most of them are gone, they've been demolished over the years. Um, as you can see, at, on this side, uh, both sides of this, this is a newer house, but the larger homes on both sides were large homes, again, rental units, small rental units, they cut up the houses, but most of them have been demolished, but, uh, it is an R-one, and this is a use variance, and I didn't see a, a, uh, reason, uh, to grant something other than what's allowed in the R-one zone.
Anyone else have any comments, questions, or concerns?
Well, I'm gonna, um, you know, I understand what you guys are saying about the parking and all of that, but when you go pick your kids up from the daycare, you're running in and you're running out, um, it might not be no, um, parking lot, but I don't see anything wrong with, you know, parking on the street to run in and run your house, and I guess it's a little different, um, iffy, because here it is, you have R-one, R-two, R-three, all of that mixed all up in, in one, across the street, maybe next door, so that's, that's kind of funny right there, you know, um, to say, if it can be, because this house might be R-one, the house right across the street might be R-two, and this house across the street can be qualified, but this, this house couldn't be qualified, so I don't think that, um, that would be a problem, even like the parking, um, when I go pick my child up from the daycare, I'm running in and I'm running out, you know, so, and then the time, if she's gonna operate be- between eight and five, that's working time, even if you have some citizens over there that do not work, um, your noise or, or it, or dance, doesn't stop until about, what, eleven or twelve? I think ten. Ten, oh, is it ten? Mm-hmm. Oh, wow, okay, I didn't think it was ten, because just last year, something was going on, I think they told me twelve. Yeah, and they told me twelve, so. I don't know, so, yeah, so it's kind of iffy, you know, because R-one, R-two, R-three, R-three all mixed up in one, parking shouldn't be a problem, even if it's not a parking lot, you know, you go to several businesses and they don't have parking lots, you have to find somewhere to park, so.
I guess I want to add on to that also, as far as the comment about the size of the house, this is just to allow for the variance for the house to be able to be used this way, that's gonna be determined by the state and the licensing and what's approved, so. In my mind, the, the state will take care of the, the other portions and, I just, I don't see that the, the size of the house, the yard is sufficient, it's fenced.
It's gonna be fenced, exactly.
Any, any, almost any driveway in Pontiac is a single drive, so this problem would exist, as you said, across the street or on this side. Parking's a problem, you're moving cars around, there's no place to park, and you've got vacant lots on both sides, so you're not impeding anybody else's, you're not parking in front of somebody's house, you're not interfering with their driveway, I think, so. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Any other comments?
You know, you know, we're talking about driving or the daycare, picking up people and stuff, I don't know, anybody ever been down Walton Boulevard at a certain time of day?
When they're picking them kids up?
And try to pick, pick those kids out, now that's a nightmare.
Now that's a nightmare. Now that's a nightmare.
We got a daycare down, right downtown at the corner of, what is that, uh, across from the courthouse? That the kids go in there and they pick up the kids there, and they bring them out and stuff like that, you know, Pontiac as a city is kind of congested and stuff, so people would have to, you know, make do and stuff like that, but uh, if, if you're gonna have, you know, if you're gonna be picking them up at the front, like she said, nobody is gonna go parking in front of somebody's house, they're gonna go in there and pick up the kids, we had a daycare in our neighborhood, in our subdivision, where the lady, the people come up there, they pull in there, they pick up the kids and they're gone, and we, we didn't have a problem with it, you know?
Hopefully you'll send them out for me.
Right, it's just some of them, some of them had to go, people coming there were dri, were driving along and stuff like that, they had a basketball court at the back, but as far as people picking the kids up, that wasn't no problem. You know, and I'm looking at these letters here, that this lady, this lady is writing, it's, it's a lot of things that they used to do, uh, she's bringing up that, you know, it's kind of selfish to me, you know, and, and it, it sounds like we've been here a long time, and we don't want anything else to move in here or nothing like that, so that's what it looks like to me.
Any other comments or questions? So I guess we are looking for a motion?
I move to approve.
I second that.
Sorry, I don't know the whole language.
That's good enough, that's good enough.
Um, does the, does the ZBA want to consider the five conditions with that motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I think the applicant addressed.
Yep.
Those in, in her plans, so.
And I think if, if it goes just like this, I think it'd be fine, if it goes like that, I think she should be fine.
The only thing I would ask for ZBA, if I may, is the landscaping, and this again was proposed landscape plan, you know, is there something specific the ZBA would like to see for the landscaping, you know, and again, landscaping is often done at buffers, you know, so you would do it either along Norton Street or, or special buffers on the, to the sides of where the vacant lots are, but if there's anything specific with the landscaping that you'd like to see, this is an opportunity to include that with a condition.
And I, I think as long as it, it's made to look nice, because it does look, um, a little awkward, because it's nothing on each, any, each side, it's nothing on the side, so I think if the landscape was, you know, as long as it looked nice, you know, daycare-ish, you know?
Um, and, you know, to use, we could potentially look at just some landscaping that's required for a, a business on a C zero next to a residential, those standards, and, and, you know, those are, don't require a ton of trees or something like that, but that might be a good standard to use here, a C zero is like an office, um, office space, and so, you know, that may be good to have for landscaping, both on Norton and to the sides.
So, it's within our rights as a ZBA to put contingencies or requirements regarding landscaping on a variance?
Yep, if it's related to the variance itself and protection of health, safety, aesthetics, neighbors, absolutely.
Isn't that the purpose of the six-foot fence, if I've got children, I want the full yard, go, have fun, play.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want trees taking up space for, for kids, because next thing you know, little monkeys are gonna be climbing them, so.
Can privacy fence be required?
What's that, six-foot wood, so?
Yeah, so.
Is that, does that mean privacy necessarily?
So, six-foot wood, I mean, a, a privacy fence, a fence is covered on condition number one up there already, and, you know, generally, when it comes to site planning in the city, there's two sets of requirements between a commercial and residential use, one is if you have a wall, or, or sometimes a heavy fence, or one without, and so generally, if you don't have a fence, there's more requirements to make sure that there's proper buffering between that commercial use and the residential use.
Trying to determine how a, what landscaping would, how landscaping would work with a privacy fence.
Yeah, you would put it on the inside of the fence, i- if the fence was gonna be approved in, in the location that's shown in your packet, so, you know, you're not gonna have shrubs, but that's where trees would come into play, and, and also shrubs that, that maybe grow anywhere from six to 12 feet tall, that may give you additional buffer for noise, pollution, beyond just the fence itself, so.
And, and both lots on, on either side are already vacant, so we're not immediately buffering for an adjacent house, correct?
So.
Based on what we saw.
Yeah, and someone could apply tomorrow to build fences on those vacant lots, you know, we don't know what the future holds, they are, you know, legally allowed to, to build houses on those lots, and so, you know, you, you would put those conditions in now for a future, you know, the idea that a future residential home would be built there hopefully someday.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. If, this is the beginning process for this application, there's a lot of steps to go, so if the board had granted a variance now, and it doesn't completely go through, or something happens that stops, does it, the slot still now have approval for 12, group home for 12 kids?
So, that's a great question, what happens from here is, if this gets approved, with these conditions, there would be a site plan need to be approved at a staff level first, should not take very long, you know, it's specifying the landscaping, we may have a discussion if any additional pavement is needed for the, you know, for the parking, for the driveway that exists, once that is approved, they really go to the building process and, and really are getting their building approvals and team inspection approvals to go forward, but the applicant with a use variance, and this isn't just with tonight's application, but any, any of them, have six months really to get your building approvals and start the construction and/or establishment of this use, otherwise it expires, so if someone in 18 months, you know, we hope the applicant's able to move forward if they get approval tonight, but in 18 months, a, a new applicant would have to come back forward for a new process if this use was not established in that time period.
Was there, was it ever determined, I know the question last, last month was, it's not a very large home, and with 12 kids, was there a minimum square footage of play area or space for the kids required?
I would ask the applicant that, just being familiar with the state rules, I can say that, you know, the applicant has a very long lot, and so there's a lot of play area.
No, I'm talking about inside the house.
Inside the house.
Because, you know, six months, you're inside because of the winter.
I would defer to the applicant on that question.
All right, it's 35 per week. Per job.
Okay.
And that would come into the licensing portion of things.
That is correct.
Again, anyway, so that's up to the state.
Yep.
So in theory, they, the state would limit this number of children based on the size of the house?
They, they control that part, yeah.
Is there, is there a further refinement to the motion, do we, have we defined it to the point at which?
So approval with.
The five conditions there, yeah, and, and staff's question earlier was, did you want to be any more specific on the landscape plan to define that, and when it comes to both adjacent to the vacant lots and also along Norton Street?
And that's, that's up to the, to the motion maker, whether there's any?
Nope, nothing else, for me.
Can you go to the podium?
So I wanted to address, I believe you mentioned earlier about the process, this is actually the first step in the process, getting the zoning approval, when we go to get our license, they say we have to do this first, because if we don't get approval, we, there's no point in moving forward, and it's a very expensive process, so they have a lot of regulations, and even after you guys, you know, view the property and do all of your, you know, investigations, they're still gonna have to send someone else out to come and look at everything again, so it's a very long process, and this is just the beginning portion of it, so. They're also gonna make sure I have, you know, all the regulations, licensing, all of that stuff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion, and do we have support with the definition? So we have motion and support?
Ready for roll call?
Roll call?
May?
Yes.
Bueno?
No.
Bavacua?
No.
Kirkendorf?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. The vote is four to two, and I believe the, the, the motion passes, so.
So use variance, you need five.
Oh, you need five?
I was gonna say.
So use variance.
Oh, yeah, so the motion does fail, I'm, I'm sorry about that, so, okay. Let me just verify that.
It might be two-thirds.
I think, I think Bueno, Commissioner Bueno is correct, but let's verify.
It's five, it's five total.
Right, because we've only had five, we've delayed the vote to give the applicant a chance, all the members are here.
The zoning board of appeals may grant a use variance to authorize the land use which is not otherwise permitted of, by this ordinance where the property is located upon the concurring vote of two-thirds of members of the zoning board of appeals, so the motion passes, so.
We have seven members of the board.
Present, two-thirds.
No, it doesn't say present, it's seven members, our board is seven members.
I think, I think that's an excellent point, I think what I'm gonna do is work with the applicant tomorrow morning, and I will make sure to email the entire, make sure we get an accurate decision.
You know, all these years, there's always been five for use variance.
Okay.
You can check, verify.
Um, thank you very much, so, okay.
The board present or the board, yeah.
Yeah. We will, I will be in touch tomorrow morning, but thank you, thank you very much this evening, so.
Great luck.
All right, next order of business is, there's been a request for tabling.
Yep.
Six A, is, is there a motion? Is a motion required for tabling?
Uh, yes, because the public hearing was requested, there needs to be a table to next month.
I have two questions before, I'll make the, the table, but right next to the sign, there's the 10-foot fence, was that approved or gone through or anything?
Okay, I can find out for next month, but this is adjacent to the 2100 OpDyke, is that correct? Um, I don't have an answer for that, but again, we can, we can find that out, so.
The other question was, this went through planning already for this development, this never came up?
So, this was approved in 2022, and there may have been a previous version prior to that, there was an amendment granted earlier this year where they needed to add some tanks to the north side of the building, and, and they needed to relocate the site a little bit, but as part of that, they, as part of that amendment, they also added this fence, but they actually removed it from the, the amendment this year that has already been approved because the variance was needed, so they're requesting this separately, but this is the first time that really planning staff has been reviewing a fence in the front yard, there is a fence elsewhere on the site that does meet the requirements, this is just for the front yard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I still moved in to table this hearing until the next month, postpone, I should say, postpone the.
Yep.
Review variance request until April 17th in our next meeting.
Second.
All right, Anderson? So we need a formal vote to be able to table an item, so as long as you're okay with the tabling, you can vote yes, or postpone it, I should say.
Why should we have to table it, it's just a fence, right?
Because the applicant's requested the item be tabled.
Oh, okay, well, yeah.
Okay, Burke?
Yes.
Kirkendorf?
Yes.
Bavacua?
Yes.
Bueno?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Okay, six, nothing, thank you.
All right, next item is public comment, general public comment, I'd like to open for public comment, anyone out there seeing none, closed public comment, move on to miscellaneous, do we have any miscellaneouss?
We have no miscellaneouss this evening.
All right, and next item is staff communications.
I have a few very brief items, again, I want to thank Commissioner Bueno just for his comments tonight, and I'll, I'll ensure that we get, I think, proper quality, but education, you make sure that we have the right legal decisions, so. I also want to share with the entire board, but also a board member, Anderson, that we are talking with our legal team about the process with variances, and does, what exactly are we doing with the staff recommendation, I know in the past, there has been a staff recommendation, I can share initially, I'm getting feedback from the attorney that we should not be, but as part of this process, both for staff and for the zoning board of appeals, we are gonna share with what we should be doing for best practices and our legal opinion, so I hope to have that for you next month, so. And then the last thing I want to share is, we've got two new gentlemen in the front row, I want to introduce both of them and give them a few minutes to introduce themselves to you, but we have new planners, two new planners with the team at the city of Pontiac here, and so, the first one, who is closest to the mic, will go first, is Corey Christensen, he's our senior planner, and I'll let him talk about who he is.
In the front.
Front, right. There you go.
There we go, so as Mark said, I am the new senior planner, I'm coming to you from the Flint area, prior to this job, I was a consultant working for Rowe Professional Services, attending meetings very much like this and providing my feedback, prior to that, I was the zoning administrator for the city of Flint, and other than that, I was very impressed with your cautious and careful deliberation tonight, and I can't wait to keep working with you guys.
Welcome.
And then next up, we have Justin Curry.
Good evening, good evening, hi, like Mark said, my name is Justin Curry, and I'm actually from Flint, Michigan as well, born and raised, and actually, I, prior to working here, I worked for the United Community Housing Coalition, which was a nonprofit based in Detroit, so not really experienced within the planning field per se, but I'm also attending Wayne State University, where I'm pursuing my master's in urban planning with a concentration in housing and community development, so that's kind of what the new information I bring to the forefront of this position, so I look forward to working with you all as well, and happy to be here, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And we are interviewing for one more position, so I'm not sure if it'll be next month or thereafter, but right now, we're working very much on a team approach, I don't, you know, obviously, come through me as your liaison at the moment, but I, I want to make sure that everyone in our department is trained and cross-trained, so I would expect to see presentations and, and, and reports from every, every planner, but I'm excited to have a, a power team here to help things move forward, so, so, okay. That is all for my communications, obviously, the only item we currently have for next month is the, obviously, the tabled item from this evening, there is a few more days, there might be a couple more days for any late applications that we can hit the, the public notification deadline, but we expect to see you guys on April 17th, so, and before I give up the floor, I, we are looking at ZBA training, and so I'm hoping to do it during the month of May, my quick question for the commission is, would you like to do it maybe after a meeting, or would you like to do it on a, on a special night where we're maybe not on camera and maybe in a different room? And the goal of this training is to just talk about best practices for ZBA, best ways to run a meeting, and this would be a more training session, so it's, it would be open to the public, but it's not necessarily a public meeting like this is, so.
Is, if there's an opportunity, I don't know how, how far ahead you're gonna have to schedule it, but to, to put it up against or with a light meeting.
Cap.
Then I'd be okay for that, I don't know whatever else. Then I'd be okay for that, I don't know what everyone else thinks.
Can we ask you, of course, during this time, during this period?
Absolutely, if you have questions for me, go ahead.
Okay. Last week, we had, and it's really burning me up, Stonegate.
Yep.
And I go out sometime, and I investigate and look at places and stuff around, and this guy came in and, and wanted to get a variance or whatever he did, some people voted for that, but I went out there and looked at it there. Nowhere in any subdivision in the whole area, even in Detroit, have I seen a single door put up to a house instead of a sliding door. Brand-new houses, a back door. It looks like, I'm, you know, since I'm on camera, it looked like a crap. And I would like to know, before they bring anything, a variance or anything from that group or that area to be approved for us for anything, that I want to know, who approved those plans? Is that, are those houses approved to have a one back door? And I know there wasn't, because I don't think anybody with their right mind would approve just a door back there, but before he come back in again, I wanted to investigate it, that who approved those plans for those, and did they go out there and check the setbacks in that area? Did planning approve those, the way that house is supposed to be built? Did they approve that? Who approved that?
So, a couple things on that, and the first thing I want to mention is, March 14th, which was the last city council meeting, we had a bunch of residents from Stonegate also, they came to this meeting, came to the city council meeting, and, and things got addressed. Between, and I learned a lot at the last ZBA meeting, so you could say that I was not aware of some of those issues until that was brought up by some of the residents. And so I definitely want to share, you know, understanding that, I share the frustrations, I think, that some of those homeowners have the way you do. What I would say, the city is, I think what the city is currently doing, and then I'll get back to some of your answers, what the city is currently doing is, our plans for that from the 2001 approval are, were stored away up at Iron Mountain. And so we are actually getting, retrieving those, and there's, it is very important for us as a city, for that entire development, to make sure that we have those plans and, and make our appropriate determinations. Now, there was a set of, of building plans that were approved, and, and building plan, the building, it was a building application, there was a planning sign-off by previous staff. Between 2018 and 2020, I believe, is the timeframe, there might have been a couple in 2021. There are no current applications that we have, but those were approved, but I don't believe that the city wants to move forward with any further approvals until we, we have all the information, we need to make a decision. And in, in the rare event we don't have all the information, there still needs to be a process to move forward, and so I, you know, we're, we're working to determine that. I, I want to hold off because I, I think it just depends on those original plans, and I, I think there's gonna be a lot of important information in there, and so I'm very much looking forward to getting to the bottom of that. And, you know, our code enforcement team is, is now aware of some of the, the issues over there, and they're also gonna be addressing that with the, with the developer.
How's the hiring going on the code enforcement positions? Have we staffed up, or?
They, there is one vacant position right now, but they have had a very successful, I mean, they, they have 11 people on the team right now, and so you have very active districts and good, and these representatives from code enforcement are really building relationships with these neighborhoods, with these people. Obviously, they have their favorites that are calling on everything, but, you know, but that's, we really need that for the city. It helps us from a planning and zoning side to ensure that what we're doing, planning the city, is actually taking effect and staying, you know, with these regulations that we have, whether it's for code enforcement, property maintenance, or our zoning code, so.
And it's really ironic, the bad house is, is right down on, off of Norton Street.
Yeah.
That the, all of this stuff is going on, and overflowing water and stuff like that, so. Just hopefully, you guys get a handle on this and can stop this, because this is really, I mean, it's, it's shame, it's criminal what they, what they're putting up out there and stuff, you know? And if a guy come here to the, to the committee here, I'm, my, and with the way I look at it out there, it's no whatever he wants, until he straightens it up. And homeowners want that to be stopped completely out there, because he didn't went ahead and put up one single door in the back, and it looks like, oh, man.
I, I would guess that as long as it's in compliance with building code, that those are the types of things that aren't really determined or looked at on a planning commission level. They could be in our planning code within the city, but, you know, ultimately, it's up, it's gonna be up to whatever state building code is.
Let me ask you a question, where do you live?
I'm in Seminole Hills.
Seminole Hills?
Yeah.
Okay, do you think they would put a house like that in Rochester, Auburn Hills?
I think, I think it's a matter of whether they would, think they could sell it or not, is the issue, but.
They would not, they would not, they wouldn't even approve, they would not. This, that, that is why I said, these people wouldn't put nothing like that in no other area, and I have, to tell the truth, I have never, humanitarian, what my name is, Habitat who, from humanity, built better houses than this guy's door.
Well, I guess I'd, I'd ask, I'd ask the, the, the planning administration, things like what size doors go in are not the purview of the planning commission, or they're not going to be to that level of detail on a site plan.
So planning commission in general for the city has a lot more architectural standards for commercial districts, but this is a mixed-use district, and, and that is what we're trying to find, is what are those standards and, and what should be, what should be applied? And, and there's a few missing gaps that we're hoping to fill in, so.
And one more thing, too, when you got a small door like that in the back instead of a sliding door, you kind of narrow down, if you got five or six people living in the house, how many people can get out of that back door in case of a fire? You know? So it's a lot of things to look at, but I just want to find out, I know you guys are working on it, and who approved this and all this kind of stuff, and stop this guy right now until we get everything straightened out, because we don't want a bunch of trash in our city. We are proud of the city, and proud of living here. I live in a nice subdivision, I want all my other subdivision to be nice, and what I see over there is trash. And, and it's a punch in the eye to the city of Pontiac to even think about putting anything like that, and I, and I'm saying that as a citizen of this city of Pontiac. Thank you.
I have one quick question. Before your time, we had months on this board that a case for the development of the Oakland Press Building downtown, I don't need much details, but it's still active?
That variance has expired.
So nothing was, nothing's been done?
Nope.
At all, okay.
And I am aware of what you're referring to.
Okay.
Yep, so.
I might have a comment. Like with the, the young lady who was doing the, on Norton, we're, we're not opposed to doing anything right anew for the districts R1, 2, and 3, but I don't want us to get into no type of habit of setting something in the R1s, you know, in the single-family homes. I don't want us to get into the habit of that, or us being like, okay, well, I'm gonna open a daycare tomorrow, you know what I'm saying? Because once we start, and once we say yes, I just want us to be aware and be cognizant of where these daycares gonna start popping up all over. Not saying that she, she, hers won't be a good example or whatever, but we just, I just want us to be careful, because the past administration allows so much to go through, and it was wrong on every level, you know what I'm saying? So us as a board, I just want to make sure that we all on the same page, and we all cognizant of our decisions when we put them out there, and we say yes, no, or anything like that.
Can you turn your mic on?
I understand what you're saying, but you know, like I said, one, two, three, you got one here, two there, three there. So I think that it should be, why is it like that, though? One here, two there, three there? So that makes the decisions a little harder. I understand what you're saying. I, I truly do, but I think that it's sort of kind of unfair to, to make those type of decisions when you got R1 right here, R2 right there, and R3 right there. So I think it's kind of hard to make them types of decisions, because you're like, should I or shouldn't I? Should we or shouldn't we? When you got one here, two there, three there? That's, that's just like me. If I'm living here, my neighbor can do this, why can't I? Because I'm R1, my neighbor is R2, right 100 feet away from me. So it makes a difference.
Yeah, it does.
And I do have one comment to make regarding your, your comment about making a recommendation, regardless of whether you make a recommendation or not, I think it's helpful if there are possible suggested motions.
Absolutely.
Included, so that we don't have to try to make one up as we go along.
Absolutely noted, and that, that will be absolutely there, and that should, I think our goal is to make sure that that's in each staff report, and so as you're going through, it's really at the conclusion there to make it simple for you guys, so thank you for running on the fly tonight.
Yeah, no, no worries.
No worries.
We'll get it done one way or the other.
Right.
It just makes our job a little easier, because there, you start getting into some details and legalese and concepts that are difficult to, to, you know, put into a motion on the fly.
Absolutely.
So.
Be in both directions?
Being in both directions.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
I've just sounded from past, especially when we had emergency manager, they made motions, you know, what we should be approving? Well, let's put it this way, is whatever, whatever they wanted to push through, you could tell how the things were made to, how the motions were written, and how, how they wanted it.
And I think you're gonna see very neutral motions from us, and really look as we develop the analysis, particularly with those standards, and, and, you know, really, we want to get your mind thinking of, of just making sure you're applying those standards, so when it gets approved or denied, there really is something to defend in why that decision was made, so.
No, I think, I think we need to move in that direction and protect ourselves, so to speak.
For sure.
Yep, in the, in the city. So I think we'll move to a, a adjournment, if there's nothing else.
So move.
Subpart.
Have a good night.
Good night.